All right. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Sue Rapley, the Board of Ed Chair, and I think we will call the meeting to order. It is 5:30. I'd like to just remind everyone if you all could remain on mute unless you are speaking. To unmute yourself, you can hit Ctrl D on your laptop, or if you hover over the bottom of the picture, there are three buttons: the microphone, the hang up, leave call, and then turn your video on and off. You could also take yourself on and off of mute that way as well. So we will start with roll call right now. So I will call out the board members' names, and if you can all just please state if you're present or not. David, are you on the line? Jean, are you on the line? Jessica?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Judy? I believe I see Judy out there. Judy? All right. Kathleen? Rob?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
Vinnie?
Here.
And Sue, I'm here. All right, if we all can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Judy, you unmute by hitting Ctrl D on your, if you're in front of your laptop. I know you just sent me a text, if that's what you're stating, but I will need to hear you in order to mark you down as present. So I could wait a second. Ctrl D. Or if you click on the picture, there's a microphone at the bottom of your screen that you can get off of mute that way as well. Sue, I think also on the cellphone, Scott Budson, correct me if I'm wrong, it's star six to unmute? Yeah, she actually, she just texted again. She's on a phone, not laptop, so. Scott Budson, am I correct that it's star six to? Oh, it looks like Judy's on.
Star six.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. So Judy, it's star six on the phone. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sue, can you mute me after I unmute then?
Pat can't. I can't. Only Pat has that power, so.
Perfect. If you can just do that because I'm using my phone.
Absolutely. I'll mute you now, Judy.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, moving on to public comments. I'd like to just remind everyone that there is three minutes for public comments. And if, you know, I don't know, Vinnie, you want to just, you know, to be the timekeeper, someone needs to be the timekeeper to keep track of the three minutes. So.
Are you doing anything at the three-minute mark, or?
The three-minute mark? I would just type in the chat, type in the chat that it's over three minutes, and I'll speak up.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so the way public comments will work tonight is if you would like to speak and you're on the chat, you can type in your name, and I will call on you. And for the folks that are not on chat and being able to type, you all will just have to call out your name, and your name, and your town that you live in, and your address that way. So do I have any? Any public comments for tonight? Okay, Frank? Turn it over to you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, great. Thank you. Frank Malone, I'm 37 Hawks Landing, Hebron, Connecticut. So I'm going to read. I never read, but I thought it would be helpful to hear some history. I was surprised to hear from my son, who is currently a junior at the high school on Monday of last week at the start of quarter four, that his teachers informed students that quarter four would be moving to a mandatory pass/fail grading system. I was surprised as we had not heard any communications from the school of potential change. When my son asked his guidance counselor for clarification on how the grading would impact his GPA calculations, we were also surprised when his counselor was unable to answer the questions as she was not aware of the decision yet made. After hearing this, I reached out to a couple of people I know from town that serve on the Board of Ed and asked them to explain the process for the changing of the grading to a mandatory pass/fail. I was shocked to learn that the board had not been consulted of these changes and was not aware or in a position to discuss my questions. I was equally surprised and disappointed that decisions were being made that would impact the academic transcript of my student and the rest of the Ram student population and were being made without any input from the students or parents in an open forum. After continuing to ask questions, I was told that by Friday of last week, we would have an email outlining all of the details relating to the changes that the school was making. After reading the email sent on Friday, I had major concerns with the approach being taken as I felt it provided no options for students or families to manage this situation in a manner that was best suiting their needs. I am advocating for the Board of Ed and the school administration to change the decision and to allow the following: Q3 grades to be included in GPA calculations as the majority of this quarter was prior to the pandemic taking kids out of the classroom; have students have the option of having Q4 graded as a pass/fail or using normal grading process. If a student chooses pass/fail for Q4, GPA should be calculated through quarter three. If students choose grades, GPA should be calculated and based on all four quarters. This approach provides the state recommended flexibility while also allowing students who have worked hard to maintain strong grades to be credited as such. I understand that colleges may end up discounting challenging GPA calc's if they include Q3 and Q4 classes, but we cannot predict how colleges will react. And this approach allows colleges to apply whatever GPA interpretation they believe is best when evaluating the students that apply. So while I'm in the position you're trying to represent in your approach, it's not consistent with any of the other school systems that I've researched on my own. None of them are implementing a mandatory pass/fail option, and they are all using Q3 or Q3 and Q4 in GPA calculations. Some of the schools and the decisions that they've made, Xavier had a virtual town meeting to discuss all of these decisions with parents and decided to stay with letter grades throughout the year. Simsberry High, Q4 offered pass/fail as an option. If you choose pass/fail, your GPA calculated through Q3. If you choose grades, GPA is calculated based on all four quarters. Glastonbury, Q4 offered pass/fail option on a class-by-class basis. Granby, in connection with the several other Farmington Valley and district reference Group B schools, they are providing students the option to receive a pass/fail for fourth-quarter courses or receive traditional letter grades on a per-course basis. This provides the state recommended flexibility while also allowing students who have worked hard to maintain strong grades to be credited as such. The decision being made here needs to be immediately reevaluated as it does not provide options to students and families to determine how best to manage this unfortunate circumstance that we all find ourselves in. I also believe this decision, if not adjusted.
Your three minutes are up, Frank.
At a major competitive disadvantage when compared to other students during their college application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vinnie. Vin, you're up next.
I would like to just echo along the lines of what Frank said, just in terms of needing more information on just what's happening. I think that having the grades for quarter three, which was almost complete, put into the GPA is definitely something that the kids should get the option to do. I also am not sure how the quarter four grades, or taking into account quarter four grades, would not be beneficial to either the kids or the teachers. And I guess I would, you know, just need some more information on how that would look, you know, going forward, and which colleges actually gave information or input regarding the Q4 grades and not taking those really into account. So I appreciate the effort of Scott and the committee, and hopefully look forward to some definite input into this grading philosophy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vinnie? Um, the next person? Vinnie, Taryn?
Hi, I'm Taryn Simon. I'm a junior at Ram. My address is 45 Buck Road, Hebron, Connecticut. I agree with a lot of what Mr. Malone said, but I think it's really important to hear from students and for have a student's voice is heard. I believe that students should have the option to count quarter three grades towards their GPA. Two-thirds of the quarter was completed while still in school, and we picked up right where we left off for the remainder of the quarter. Considering this, it seems fair that the grades students earn should be counted towards their GPA. And our peers in Glastonbury, Tallahassee, and other neighboring towns have already decided to count quarter three grades. And these are students that Ram kids will be competing with when applying to colleges. Also, Ram stated that the goal of their new policy was to be beneficial and fair to all students, but it's ironically penalizing an entire group of students. So I think it's important that kids get the choice for quarter three. So I just ask that you guys reconsider the decision you made. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next person is Matt.
Hi, my name is Matt Malone, 37 Hawks Landing, Hebron, Connecticut. I'm a junior here at the high school at Ram. So being a junior, and this being my most important year of high school, I believe that, you know, our students at Ram should be given the opportunity to go pass/fail or get our grades for third quarter and for fourth quarter, sorry. So that will allow us to put our best foot forward to colleges. During the first semester, I was actually, I actually had broken my collarbone, and it was hard for me to write. So I was at a little bit of a disadvantage for the first quarter. So I was banking on second semester being that time that I could bring up my grades. And I feel like that is kind of being compromised here. And quarter three was, as Taryn said, was mostly done in school with just picking up for the last couple of weeks outside of school. So I believe that, you know, the work that we've put in in school as well as out of school should be calculated towards our GPA. And I believe that making pass/fail mandatory and not counting quarter three or quarter four grades is just, in the end, hurting juniors and the rest of our students in the college process, and that we should be given the choice to go pass/fail or have our grades calculated into a GPA so that we have the opportunity to put our best foot forward towards colleges. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie? And Stephanie, if you are on the phone, it's, oh, okay, good. You got it.
So I'm not going to repeat what other people have said because I agree wholeheartedly with everything that everybody said. I was shocked to find out that you guys were going to pass/fail. A lot of students find that the year, their grades get better as the year progresses. And I really think that it would be a disservice to them after they've spent all of third quarter working really hard to get good grades, not to have those counted as their GPA. I also think that parents and students should be able to opt for pass/fail for fourth quarter because parents and students know best how they are learners. And some kids, I agree, probably are not doing as well as they could have done if they were actually in a classroom setting. But I don't think that the board should make, or the administrators should be able to make that decision without our input, especially because my son is also a junior. And this is, as everybody has said before, junior year is like the most important year. This is the year that colleges are going to be looking at their transcripts. And I just think that it's going to do our students a disservice if we move to the model of pass/fail. Plus, like I said before, the kids already spent a lot of time in third quarter in the classroom, and I really feel like that is unfair to them to now make it a pass/fail. And those are my comments. Thank you very much for listening. And by the way, I'm at 30 Fox Ridge Lane in Hebron.
Thank you. Darren?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. My name's Darren DiMaggio. I'm at 11 Wood Pond Road in Hampstead. And I want to echo to the growing chorus of voices that I feel the way that this decision was made and the resulting decision both won't benefit the Ram student population. I would ask the committee, I know they're well-intended in trying to help students, but I would ask the committee to reconsider the decision. I would advocate that quarter three grades count since the students were in school for two-thirds of the semester. And I would also advocate for a choice on pass/fail for students at Ram. I agree that other towns are doing this, and this will put the Ram students at competitive disadvantage. And I just want to add that as someone who's worked in schools for over two decades, quarter four is especially difficult time for teachers to motivate students, given the nice weather. And I do feel like this would handicap the teachers in terms of motivating their students to perform up to their potential. So I appreciate that the committee would take another look at this. And this is a fluid situation, and I hope the committee takes the course of voices into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rachel?
Hi, I'm Rachel Lintonelli. My address is 47 Ogden Lord Road in Marlborough. I totally agree. I think that quarter three should count towards your GPA. And I don't want to restate anything that was already said. But additionally, I'd just like to add that for quarter four, I think it should not be a mandatory pass/fail. I feel as if it should be an optional pass/fail or the option to have normal grading systems. I know that for college courses, such as I'm in the class medical careers, and we get MCC credit for completing the course, those colleges require a letter grade and a final grade. So for those courses that will be receiving college credit, they are going to be using our normal numerical grades for that. So I feel as if we're able to still continue to grade normally for classes like that, it shouldn't be an issue to make it an option depending on the student. And additionally, with the GPA, colleges with standardized testing, such as the SAT, being now a lot less successful for students. They're really considering our GPAs a lot harder. And I just think it would be unfair for us to have one-fourth of our GPA just kind of ignored from the school year. And I think it's really going to put us at a disadvantage when we're applying to colleges in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana?
Hi, my address is 318 Jones Hollow Road in Marlborough. So I'm the student rep for the Board of Ed for the junior class, and I've had a lot of people ask me questions, but both Emma and I have been kept out of the loop regarding this. So I'm not loving that we don't really know what's going on. But I think it's really important to highlight the fact that quarter four grades specifically in AP classes tend to be a grade booster for a lot of people and help their GPA a lot. So while I can understand that it's very, it could be challenging for the guidance counselors and the administration to facilitate letting students choose between pass/fail and regular grades, I think it's something that should be strongly considered because quarter four tends to help out a lot of kids' grades. And for those of us who are planning on applying to college this fall, that could be very important. And considering the fact that a lot of schools around us aren't going to pass/fail and are continuing to give regular grades, those are the students we're competing against to apply to college for, like Taryn said previously. So I think it's important to consider that. In quarter three grades, we were here the most majority of the time, and a lot of us did very well quarter three. So I think that the Board of Ed needs to be more involved in these decisions. Emma was not involved in any of these decisions either, and neither of us really knew what was going on, even though we've had people asking us about things, and they expected us to be in the loop, even though we aren't. So I think that needs to happen. And I think that the policies that have been decided on need to be strongly revised and looked over again with students' opinions being present. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne?
Okay, Joanne Hebert, Andover, Connecticut, 134 Bear Swamp Road. I just wanted to state for the record that I am, you know, disappointed to not see the budget numbers reduced more this year due to a couple of facts, due to, you know, the whole COVID situation, in particular that the people that it's going to affect most, you know, are small businesses in all our communities. I've spoken to, you know, several people who have voiced that to me as, you know, also our senior citizens, people on fixed incomes, you know, small businesses, people that might have lost jobs or, you know, struggling every day. Again, the enrollment is down and with COVID. And probably the people that I mentioned are not even aware of these virtual meetings that are taking place because they're busy with other things or simply, you know, not aware. They're waiting for their chance to vote or something, and this year, they're not going to have that. So I just felt like someone needs to speak up on their behalf. No one's trying to reduce the budget so greatly to affect education just to affect it enough to be more in line with current enrollment numbers and everything. You know, I just thought that we'd see a little bit more of that and see, bring the numbers back to where they need to be for the current enrollment numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Hey, good evening, everyone. Lots of the same sentiment as it relates to the comments so far about the grading policy. Just mostly starting with disappointment that we didn't have a higher degree of collaboration between the staff, the board, and parents, who are obviously very interested in this really important topic. It's already been stated that a lot of the towns and districts worked in a very collaborative way or are in the process of doing that with all three of those kind of legs of the stool. And the commissioner's guidance from the state of Connecticut highlighted and indicated that coordination between the school or district, the board, and parents was kind of the way to go in that updated guidance. And we, I'm not sure how many folks were on the call here for last Wednesday for the budget, but there was a request for an increase in collaboration in advance of this rollout before sending it out and causing the confusion where we find ourselves right now. The last thing that I'll say is I'd like to see Mr. Leslie, who I think will be presenting a little bit later on, I hope. There was a principle from when he talked about how he and the team and the staff were looking at formulating this policy, and these are my words, not his, but what screamed out at me was they were going to look at, in any way possible, to make it as advantageous as possible to each individual student to the extent that you can with a policy like this. And in short, that's why I think the increased flexibility in allowing the choice of pass or fail or grade for students is really the right direction to go. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see any other comments listed in the chat. So if.
This is Judy Benson-Clark, Marlborough, Connecticut. I was in receipt of two well-written, well-crafted letters from parents. And to piggyback on what Mr. DiMaggio said, I too have been in public schools for at least the last two decades. I've never seen, not just because of COVID, but the number of students that have anxiety and depression and care so much about education. It's become very high-stakes. Colleges are extremely competitive. And historically and traditionally, our Ram students have done very, very well, receiving great amounts of merit money for their academic performance. I agree that we should. It's a time when many students feel out of control. We all feel as though we cannot control things. So to give students choice seems to be wisest to me. And to give students, I too wrote that, every advantage possible to let students and families, along with guidance counselors or whomever makes sense, to determine whether pass/fail is best for them because of their unique circumstances or whether they prefer to take the grade. I think that our staff did a wonderful job, and I think the intent was spot-on to help students. And I think our students who spoke this evening were well-spoken. And I applaud them being part of this conversation, and I hope that we can support those recommendations.
Okay, thank you, Judy. All right, does anybody else have any public comments that cannot type in the chat? If you just want to announce your name at this time, please? All right, I'm hearing no more public comments at this time. All right, so moving on in the agenda. We are add and delete agenda items. Does any of the board members have any additions or deletions to the agenda? If everyone could go on mute that's not speaking, that would be appreciated. So no add or deletions to the agenda at this time. So moving on to item five, 5.1, discussion and possible action regarding the administrative budget for 2020, 2021. Dr. Law, presentation.
I will share my screen. And. So the purpose of the presentation is to take the information that the board had voted on last Wednesday and to be able to provide that as a summary to the board of what those budget numbers look like in preparation for the adoption of the operating, the capital budget, and the allocation of the surplus funds. Again, as you know, and as everyone has spoken passionately about tonight, and we continue to all think and feel very strongly about our vision and our mission and our theory of action are making sure we're doing what's right for students, that we're providing them every academic and extracurricular opportunity to be able to grow and thrive and be successful. And all of those components were taken into consideration as we pulled together the budget. From the April 22 meeting, there were three operating budget changes that were requested. And the numbers that were presented on April 22, in the end, the final number might be slightly different because there were a few places where some numbers were double-counted. But in putting this into the system and working through all of it, we did the operating budget. We removed the sick and severance, which included Dr. Siminski's payout for 2021 for a total of $100,009. We removed the lease payment for the copier and the music instruments because those are in the operating budget. There was conversation around the truck lease, but you'll see that as part of the capital budget in a moment. And we added security personnel for $7,000. Items one and two are being paid out of the funds that we have in our 1920 budget. The requests from April 22 for changes to the. The requests from April 22 for changes to the capital budget, there were six of them: to remove the truck lease payment, to remove the high school media center chairs and tables, to remove the architectural design for the front of the two buildings, the middle school and the high school, to reduce the baseball field from $150,000 to $54,960, which is the difference of the $95,040, to add the competition field drainage, and to enhance or upgrade the mobile security capabilities within the district. Item one is being paid from the 1920 funds because we obviously have to pay that lease, but otherwise, everything else has been removed or changed. As far as the request for the surplus fund allocations, there was the request to do three things, or actually, four things with that: the DOT overage to pay for that, the DOT contingency, and the IT switch repair, which were total $2,014, $2,014, $800. And when you take the total amount of surplus funds, the $304,959, less the $2,14,800, it provided a $90,159 offset that could be set for the levies for the three towns. So this is a summary of the calculations that were done for the changes between both the operating and the capital budget that were worked on with myself and the business manager. And it provides us with an operating budget that is now at $29,805,4... Hold on one second. $89,805,488, and a capital budget at $343,362. The capital budget now has these items in it, that some were there already, some had already been removed or replaced based on the summary I just provided. So the overall budget that we are bringing forward, capital and operating, is a negative 0.01% increase from this current year. The final appropriation request to... That request of 0.01% does not include the offset for the three towns that will also be offset from the levy once it is finally calculated and the budget is passed. And so this is the offset that each of the three towns will also receive from the levy. So that leaves three motions for the board tonight to make. One is for the operating budget, one is for the capital budget, and then the third is for the allocation of the surplus funds.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to just go around in an organized fashion and let the board members ask any questions or speak. So David, I do not believe he was on earlier, but I'm just going to call out his name. David? Jean? Jessica?
No questions.
Joe?
No questions.
Judy?
I do not have any questions.
Kathleen, I do not believe is on. Rob?
No.
Scott?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask if you could go back to the slide that's titled "requested changes." I think it's like the third or the fourth slide for a second.
This one?
Uh, one more, please.
This one?
Yeah, so just for the... The numbers are accurate there, but the third item, add armed security personnel, just for clarity so that it's labeled correctly and we understand what the intent was moving forward. There is no addition of an armed security personnel. It's an adjustment or augmentation of the already existing door monitor in place to increase or enhance that security posture, and there are three or four different options on the table with the facilities committee that included armed, unarmed, uniformed, not-uniformed, and I'd just like the record to accurately reflect that.
Any other comments, Scott?
Nope.
Stephanie?
I had a question about the budget booklet. I don't know if it's something we are discussing right now.
The actual budget book itself?
Yes. It says that there's a reduction of a sixth paraprofessional on page 17, and I don't know if that's reflected in the numbers, but it is. Okay, I'm not sure that was anything that we discussed, an additional discontinuance of another paraprofessional position.
The door monitor is a paraprofessional. He's under the paraprofessional grouping, so when that position changes to an enhanced position, that would be removing that position.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, is that it? Stephanie, anything more?
No, I'm all set. Thank you, Sue.
Okay, thank you. Vinnie?
No questions.
Okay, myself, I do have a few things that I'd like to state myself, so at this time I will do that. So the majority of the board preaches about transparency and collaboration, and it's clear that they do not practice what they preach. The proposed budget by one of the board members was not transparent or collaborative with the entire board nor the public. It was all negotiated behind closed doors with some board members who can obviously be swayed, which is unethical. These negotiations are supposed to be happening in public. It's the law. My position has been from the start to be upfront and work with all board members by following the rules of being a board member. In my position as chair, I've brought in Cave and our board lawyer to help the board understand what your roles are as an elected board member. This effort and money spent goes in one ear and out the other because, as I've been told directly by some of you, that Cave doesn't know what they're stating and that this is a waste of time. I quickly learned that if Cave, our board lawyer, and others do not follow suit, they are deemed as a waste of time. I will adhere to the laws that bind me. In this proposed budget from the majority, one particular addition was the security item quoted as costing $25,000 that did not adhere to the policy the facilities committee, whose members who are sitting right here designed to increase transparency and accountability. The district does not have a quote for this work yet, and board members are setting aside $25,000 for this project that has not been recommended by the facility committee, the superintendent, nor the SRO. It was stated that the $25,000 would cover two to three entry systems with cameras. However, the district has 24 entry locations on the current system. This implies that we will have to use two different entry systems for the district, which is not practical. In addition, the middle school and high school each have two camera buzzer systems tied to each school's main entrance that would, at the least, have to be changed over with this new system. This $25,000 quote, which no one has seen, and I suspect board members went out and got themselves, is a significant breach of protocol and, again, demonstrates a lack of boundaries and creating an impossible situation for the superintendent. Through numerous discussions with the facility subcommittee, the superintendent and facilities director have been told the committee wants detailed information before any substantial project could move forward. As a matter of fact, the superintendent and facilities director developed the capital project plan forms for every project in the capital budget this year per the request and agreement of the facility subcommittee. The majority of this board has failed to hold each other accountable to the policy that they should be directing all actions on this board. This board repeatedly holds the superintendent and the administration to higher standards than what we are willing to hold to ourselves. This is a shortsighted addition that should not be placed on the taxpayers in our communities. My suggestion in this sensitive time would be to eliminate this line item and have the administration reevaluate the security plan so we could have a thoroughly vetted plan that may or may not include this item. This proposed budget removes the media furniture that was previously approved by the facility committee. Since when is going back on the committee's direction, the right thing to do. Our media center is used by students and teachers every period of the day. Teachers bring classes to do work, study halls are often held there, and students utilize this space for learning throughout the day. When the floors were redone, some of the antiquated furniture had to be removed, leaving the media center with about half the workspaces it had before. This seriously hampers the ability for teaching and learning to occur. Despite the concerns that the old furniture shouldn't have been removed, it was, and now the majority is deciding that this educational request is not necessary. I cannot support this way of thinking. Pay to participate was taken out of the budget well before COVID-19. Even though board members want to sell this elimination on revenue, on the elimination of revenue and rally around helping families during this time, this elimination is something I cannot support. The initial purpose of pay to participate was to offset the cost of athletics and the burden on taxpayers. What I wanted to support is a decreased amount so the parents of multiple children can afford to sign up all of their children. It's a delicate balance to fairly represent your communities and your own self-interests, and I believe in compromise to ensure we are being fair as we are impacting everyone in their tax dollars. In addition, fully eliminating these fees transfers costs onto many of our taxpayers, including senior citizens and other fixed incomes who can ill-afford the added burden. There are way too many conflicts of interest throughout the makeup of this board, and it is apparent that these conflicts are negatively impacting the board's ability to maintain boundaries and function appropriately. I'm continuing to seek out advice from our board lawyers and having them attend meetings to reinforce what the board roles are and how we should be engaging in board business in a legal and an effective manner. Repeatedly, I hear it's a waste of time. Folks, the role of a board of education is written in legislation, and how you conduct yourself could have legal implications for you personally and for this district. The sharing of confidential information discussed in executive session is one instance where this board repeatedly has shown a lack of boundaries. There were recent executive sessions where information was leaked to our teachers and other community members. This is an example of board members not following rules nor doing the right thing. I bring this up now because the public has put their trust in us and expect us to follow rules and act with integrity, and it is my opinion that the board has fallen short on that front. Regardless of whether you support the superintendent, the majority of the board has sabotaged this process to move forward their own agenda. The governor took away our constitutional right to vote for this budget, and that does not sit well with me at all. Single-handedly approving a budget without the say of taxpayers is not a board member's role, and I feel very uncomfortable with this executive order, especially when my town leader and Board of Finance chair has voiced their concerns that they are not being fully represented in this proposed budget. Wrapping up, I'm proud of what I represent to the children and taxpayers of our communities, along with my four children. I strive to set a good example of what integrity looks like and doing the right thing by standing firm on what I believe is right without being swayed by fear of being disliked, bullied, or unelectable. I pay no mind and will not live in fear that I will receive emails, phone calls, or text messages with verbally abusive tones stating that I will be sued or will not be voted at the next election. We were elected to represent our communities and do what's right for the students. I had high hopes in an inclusive, transparent process. And in addition to the other reasons listed above, I will be voting no tonight on this proposed budget. So at this time, do I have a motion on the table?
So move, make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll go down. Jessica, do you vote yes or no?
Sorry, yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes, very definitely yes, and I'm very proud of this board and its collaboration. I don't even have a student there next year and have put countless hours in and can speak for myself, and I've only seen ethical behavior from these very fine folks who are citizens and volunteers who I could not be more proud of.
Rob?
Very enthusiastic, yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Stephanie?
It is difficult to speak for a town. I think we've done the best we can, and I think I agree with Judy that we work very hard at what we do, and our hearts and souls are into this. I will vote yes.
Vinnie?
Yes.
And Sue's voting no. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yeses, one no. Motion passes. So do I have a motion on the next motion for the capital budget?
I'll make a motion to accept the capital budget.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
We'll just go down and ask for discussion items. Jessica, any discussion?
No, no discussion.
Joe?
No.
Judy?
Thank you, everyone, for your hard work on the capital and for really considering the townspeople and the financial burden and actually coming in with a very reasonable budget that puts kids in the town and the community first.
Sue, before you go on, can you just... The motions really need to be specific so that the minutes have the exact amount that is being requested for each of the budgets. So it's not just accept the capital budget, but that the Ram Board adopt a capital budget of $343,362 for 2020, '21. Those motions are up on the screen right now, and I just want to... Because the minutes of the meeting need to be specific about what is the number, and I didn't hear the operating one, so I'm sorry.
Yep, we could go back and do the operating one to state the amount. So Joe, did... Who?
I made the motion, so I'll make it again. The Ram, I make a motion that the Ram Board of Education adopt the operating budget of $29,805,488 for 2021.
Rob, I think you seconded it.
Yep, I'll still second.
Okay. So let's just go down briefly again. Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Judy?
Yes, aye.
Rob?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Vinnie?
Yes.
And Sue, no. So moving on to the capital. So Rob, do you want to just state that motion on the screen?
Sure, I'll make a motion that the Ram Board of Ed adopt a capital budget of $343,362 for the school year of 2021.
And I will second that.
Okay. Rob, any comments? I think we're up to you for comments.
No, I'm good.
Scott?
No comments.
Stephanie?
No comments.
Vinnie?
I'd just like to say I hope that we can figure out a way to fix the after-hours school lockdown and kids being locked out of both the middle school and the high school. Thank you.
Okay, Sue, I have no comments, so we'll go to the vote. Jessica?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Rob?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Vinnie?
Yes.
And Sue is voting no, so that's... Motion passes, seven to one. Moving down to 5.2, discussion and possible... Moving down to 5.2, discussion impossible action regarding the 2018-19 Region 8 surplus funds. If someone would like to make a motion and that motion's on the screen.
I'd like to make a motion that we RAM Board of Ed allocate the $304,959 in surplus funds from the 18-19 budget as follows. $86,350 to cover the DOT overage, $98,450 for DOT contingency, $30,000 for IT hardware, and $90,159 to offset the 2021 levy for Andover, Hebron, and Marlboro towns.
I second that.
Okay, Jessica, do you have any comments?
No, no comments.
Joe?
No comments.
Judy?
No comment.
Rob?
No comment.
Scott?
No comments.
Stephanie?
No comments.
Vinnie?
No comments.
Myself, no comments. So taking, we're going to take the vote now. Jessica, your vote?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
And myself, I'm voting yes. So that's, motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to item six, discussion of the pandemic grading practices for RAM Middle School and High School. And this item was just to allow the board to ask questions and gain any more information that you needed based on the feedback or the letter that was sent out on Friday. So I will, I'll go around so we have an organized fashion, and we'll start off that way. So Jessica, do you have any questions or comments or feedback?
Yeah, I do have some questions, and I think some of the people had mentioned that. I'm curious as to what other high schools and what colleges were contacted to come up with these decisions.
So I'm assuming Scott, is Scott going to answer the questions?
I think Scott, if you could unmute and maybe help with answering those questions along with me. I know from a high school standpoint, myself as part of the Ursa NASA Superintendent Group, we've been sharing all of our information around the different decisions that districts are making around pass/fail, and of course, they're elementary through secondary schools. So we've been sharing that information. Scott, where other, what are other conversations you've had?
We've had active conversations with the shoreline schools. So the, most of the high schools on the shoreline from, say, Madison East, and then many of the schools in the eastern part of the state, as well as schools in the, our athletic conference, the CCC. In terms of the colleges that we've had the most active conversations with, I would say that would be UConn, Seton Hall, Northeastern, URI, Quinnipiac, and Eastern Connecticut State University.
Just from my personal standpoint, I do believe that having that option of pass and fail, and this was raised by one of the people that spoke, both acknowledges the work that the students have done, but also respects and acknowledges some of the struggles that students are having. So it's again, allowing people to make that choice at that point in time. So I just hope it is something that you guys will consider and review.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Jessica. Joe?
I think, you know, I shared my comments with you, Madam Chair, this morning about what I thought we should be doing. I think there needs to be, I hope that the comments will be taken back to the administration and revised plan. I do feel that, you know, there has to be something there for all the kids. It's very unprecedented times. We've done things, you know, we've never seen things like this before. So there's, you know, there's rollout of things that I think we could look at, you know, so many other schools like East Tarford. I know I've talked to some people that have gone to strictly all grades. I mean, there's no, there's no pass/fail. I think the administration needs to reevaluate, as some of the parents have said. And, you know, it doesn't affect my kids, they're out of school now, so. But I think it's something that we, we got to get right. And it, I think we'll, Mr. Leslie and his team will, will find a way to correct and address people's concerns. So I just hope that we take the time. It's thoughtful process. I don't know what the timeline is, if it has to be immediate. But, you know, it should be thoughtfully through, you know, gone through with all, with all of the children, freshmen, sophomores, juniors at, with their best interests in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy?
Yes, I feel very strongly on this one. I greatly appreciate what the intent of the letter is and the thought about honoring students and any possible struggles that have occurred. But I, as a parent, as an educator, as a community member, I greatly believe in the love of learning and learning to the greatest extent possible. And along with that, I think should come choice and for families to work with themselves and guidance counselors and to make the individual choice for their students. And I will not get into it, and I chose not to really make this a board issue. But I want to be one of two parents who had, with the first girl accelerated a year in mathematics. So they took calculus last year, and my daughter got a five on her calculus exam as a junior. She also was in the 99th plus percentile in mathematics on the SAT. Yet, grading, because we did not have some foresight, she was, it's a long story, it's complicated, but essentially, the grading didn't work in her favor. And that's fine. She has a huge merit scholarship. She's going to the university of her choice. Her sister had huge merit money. I endorse this stuff greatly. But I want to make sure that every family has the choice and the option to do what is best for their children, because college is very, very competitive now. It's extremely competitive, and our RAM kids get huge money. And I want to make sure that kids get the maximum amount of money for them and their families going forward. So I really hope that we can make this choice, as I think our administration has and teachers have always been incredibly respectful of families in unique situations. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Rob, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Scott?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and a comment. The first question is, and this would be for Scott and Pat or anyone else who's on the line who was part of the team. There's, there's a lot of concern about the, the lack of flexibility or that, that choice to go for the students in conjunction with their parents and ideally guidance counselors to select a pass/fail or a grade. And my, I think, simple question is, what is the, I've read a lot about this since, since last week, and what is the, what is the downside? Like, why, can you lay out reasons that we would not go that way? My first question.
Sure, and I'm happy to take that. And before I do that, though, I do want to thank all the parents and particularly the students that are on tonight that chimed in. It's always great to see students involved in governance of our school, and it's nice to connect with everybody, certainly during these times. I received quite a few emails from students as well. So again, it was really great to hear the student voice. When, when the committee kind of first sat down to consider this, I would say that all of the communication that we had been hearing from both students and parents at that time were really from those families and students who were experiencing significant struggles with, whether it be economic, whether it be financial, whether it be health issues. And there was a real plea to, to go pass/fail. So we were, we were hearing there was a significant request to move to a pass/fail system to address the levels of anxiety and stress that many of our families and students were, were experiencing. The, kind of, the committee's thinking at the time when we were looking at the pass/fail option is, some members of the committee, and I think the, and some of the things we were hearing prior to our meetings was that by offering a choice on whether to take grades or go pass/fail, for a lot, for a number of students, that really isn't a choice. Students are going to want to, they're going to choose grades because a lot of our students, appropriately so, are grade-focused. And there may be, you know, students within our population who really need the fourth quarter to kind of relax a little bit because they're, they are dealing with so much other anxiety during this time and that we didn't want to put that burden of having to make that choice on them. So that's, that's partly the explanation there. The other, another piece in terms of, I'll clarify one thing, and I think there is, there may be some misinformation or misunderstanding on the pass/fail is whatever pass/fail ends up looking like, and this isn't just for RAM, this would be for any, any of the high schools that are using any type of pass/fail. The pass/fail would only be for typically the fourth quarter. Students would still be getting grades for the second semester or the full year, if it's a full-year course. So that colleges wouldn't, would not be seeing the pass/fail on the transcript. The transcript would actually have a grade associated with the course. So colleges won't be seeing, you know, we're not, we're not suggesting that at the end of the final course, a student is given a pass or a fail. The pass/fail is just for the fourth quarter. The actual courses themselves would have grades associated with them. In one of our conversations with one college, I think it was Eastern, they talked about how if a school is going to give students the choice in moving to pass/fail, and the colleges are aware of that, they may assume that if a student decides to take a pass, it's because their grade wasn't very good, when in fact, it might have been fine, but the student just felt like, you know, I need to, I need to take that pressure off of myself, so I'm going to take the pass. Their grade might be just fine, but it could be interpreted as they did that because the grade was, was not sufficient. So those were the, the kind of things that went into our thinking at the time in terms of, of moving to the pass/fail.
Thanks, thanks, Scott. The other question that I had was, because it's, I'm still, even as we speak today, not clear, although I think the memo that went out on Friday indicates that it's final. What is the status? This is, this is for Dr. Law. Is the policy final or in coordination or something else? Where do we stand right now?
So as we said, we want to listen to the feedback, and we will go back to the committee and bring this feedback back and discuss it again with the committee. They've had a lengthy, lengthy discussions over the past couple of weeks to try to work through all the same types of questions or concerns that have been voiced here or in emails. So they will bring this, will bring this information back. We actually have a meeting scheduled for later this week and discuss it with them and see what their feedback is around making adjustments to this based on people's requests. Again, as Scott said, when we started this process, the requests were coming from students and families who were deeply struggling and were worried about grades and pass/fail and all of that. And so now that we continue to hear some feedback, we will bring it back to the committee and work with them to see if there's areas where they feel we should adjust this and bring this back to the parents and to students with any changes that then happen.
So that sounds like it's proposed versus final if you're going back for consultations with the committee, which is, which is great, and I'm happy to hear that. Can, can we share with the board members and the public since communication has been, been a challenge then? So what are the, what is the, what is the path after that, other than speaking to the committee later this week? In other words, when, when would we expect to have either a revision or an actual final decision?
Since I'm not sure, based on some of the other conversations that we've had as a committee, I would love to say that maybe this Friday we'd have that available, but I'm not sure. And I want to be able to give the committee time to really work through and think this through. The conversations take a very long time, a large committee, and there's lots of different concerns and voices as part of that. But as soon as we work through that, we want to be able to share that in a timely manner with parents, with the board, with students. But I don't want to put a deadline on the fact that this Thursday we'd be able to formalize this, make any changes, and get that out by Friday. So I would say within the next week.
Thanks.
All right, Scott, is that, I'm assuming Scott's done. He put himself back on mute. Stephanie?
Yeah, again, it's another multifaceted subject. And I think my concern is with the students' drive and perseverance, what it's doing to that and lack of motivation. If some students may see a pass/fail as, as an opportunity to, to lose some of that drive. And, but, but again, I understand that some of those students may need the pass/fail for their, you know, for their well-being. And again, it's, depending on the subject matter and the format of the subject, pass/fail may be appropriate, but in others, I think, you know, we need that, that letter grade. So the option to go pass/fail class by class is, is something that I personally would like to see. And I would also love to see the students have the option to go pass/fail or, or letter grade as well. So if it all can be managed, I think, I think the option is, is important. Thanks.
Thank you. Vinnie?
Yeah, I echo, you know, what Stephanie said and also what Scott said about the kids being grade-focused. And, and I think especially during this time, there's, all the distractions have kind of gone away. I don't think I've seen my daughter do as much homework as she has done in the last month because there's, there's no activities, there's no hanging out with the friends. She had her driving test, which was on March 26th, which got canceled and has not been rescheduled. So there is a big focus on the schoolwork during this time. And I also have a concern for the students that, you know, kind of take, you know, start the year slower. You know, somebody's got a B, a B in the first quarter, a B-plus in the second quarter. They've, they've moved it up to an A in the third quarter and maybe on the cusp of going to an A-plus in the fourth quarter. I have seen the power school number grades, you know, they're still in the system. So I guess for me, it would be a question of, can you explain the difficulty with, or the roadblocks with giving the grades for, from the administration's standpoint, via testing and those things?
Vinnie, can I, can I, Vinnie, can I just ask you to clarify your question again? I'm not quite sure if you could just maybe rephrase it?
I'm just asking why, or what are the obstacles with giving grades in the, in quarter four?
And Vinny, I, you know, again, from the committee's standpoint, I don't think there was necessarily any, anyone outwardly opposed to giving grades in quarter four. The, it was more the question of moving to pass fail to address the concerns that were expressed to us prior to beginning that process and relieving the stress that, again, a number of our students and families were experiencing. So it wasn't necessarily like, we don't want to give grades. It was more, we want, we want to use this other option. Which, so, you know, I think when, when the committee goes back, it's not like we're going to go back and, and be, you know, opposed, you know, everyone opposed to any type of grading. It was more looking at the option as a, as beneficial to students.
And I think along with that, Scott, right now, when we're talking about grading, teachers talked a lot about that they're trying to figure out all of this. How to give a test, how to give a quiz, how to assess student learning? What, what, what am I grading? How am I grading it? It's all new for teachers right now. And I think they're also trying to look for alleviating the, the stress of, of figuring out those grades for students because it's, it is so very different. What, what is being graded and how it's being graded is looking so different in fourth quarter that they can put in grades into Power School, but that those would be equated with passes or fails. But then what, as you can see on the screen, the way that the actual grade on the transcript would be calculated would be what's up on the screen right now. So I think it, it, there was several parts to it. But for students, try and, or the changes that are happening with what an actual assessment is and what are we grading, there's a lot for teachers to consider.
So it's, it's a fair statement to say that the quarter four grades, if they are letter graded, could impact the overall annual GPA if, if they are in a positive territory or they, they've increased their grade from the previous one and two quarters.
That, that's correct. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I would just, I would just like to, you know, ask that, that that be considered, as you've heard here tonight from people, that, that, that may be considered as an option to allow those, those students that, that have that. I, 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 I'm kind of a little offended by the pass with distinction. I think it does take away some of the work that's being put in by some of these students. And I, I think it would be fair to those students that are working hard to try to give an accurate grade if, if, if that can be done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vinny. All right. I don't have any questions, but Joe, I believe you would like to, you have something?
I do. I, I, I've been thinking about this a lot and I, and I don't understand, you know, again, I know Mr. Leslie's working hard with his team and, and the administration to get this right. I just want to state that this is unprecedented times. Everybody understands the challenges. However, my kids are all in university. They're sitting home here in different rooms, doing virtual classes through the universities. There's nothing late, there, there, there's no, there, there's no pass or fail at, at the moment right now. I mean, it's discussion point, but they're doing the work. Our teachers are getting paid. They're doing their jobs. Our kids are students. They know what they have to do to, you know, juniors know what they do, need to do to get better grades. I, I think some, I don't know who said it earlier, but the children need to be pushed. I, I understand there's a lot of social, emotional stuff going on, but, you know, we can, teachers with the guidance department can, can, and I think that was in the email, there's ways to help those children who are, you know, under all this, this anxiety and stress. The, for, for me, I would like to see that we, we stuck, stuck to our, our course of grades and that the children understand that, that this still has to be the environment they're in. We're, we're all adapting from, from adults to, you know, from working from home to being confined inside and socially. This, this is, this is not, this is the norm right now, but we have to adapt to that. And I think that we're, we're going off in a different direction. And I, I, you know, I talked to several people about East Hartford. I'll bring it up as an example again, East Hartford High. You know, they sat down and they, they looked at all of these, the, what's going on. And, you know, the grade, the grade, the grading system, A through F, is, is the, why they came up with it. It was a, made logical sense to me. You know, and I think some of the conversation I had with, with Mr. Leslie last week was the same thing. They, they'll get it. I think they'll get this. But we have to get our heads behind that we are, this is still an institution of learning. And I'd like to move this along and make a motion that we, we, we get back to a grading in either Q three and Q four. We, we get this right and we make the, the grading policy, you know, the right policy. But it needs also need to come back to the board. That's my motion. This needs to get a board, a board traction on it. We need to see it before it's rolled out again to the public. That's my comment. Thank you. I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel, but we need to get this right and we're, we're seemingly struggling with that.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions? All right. So at, at this time, I'm, I'm going to move to public comments, if that's okay with the board. All right. So I'm moving back to public comments. If anyone has any public comments, would you mind typing your name in the chat? If you're on the phone, you're free to call out your name. Darren?
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah. So regarding the committee, just hearing that other schools are having parent and student input, I'm wondering if a question could be brought back to the committee? If the committee is open to having student and parent representation on the committee regarding the grading policy change? And that is my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Just want to thank everyone for the, the conversation. Obviously, a lot of passion and a lot of concern on how this moves forward. And I really appreciate the ability for the board to get involved and also the ability for the committee to reconsider its decision. Couple of things, I, I think parent and student interaction in this issue is critical. And I would strongly recommend, as Darren did, that there's an opportunity for more students and more parents to give feedback into how they would like this approach to be handled. It, it appears as if there was a strong sentiment of people that were dealing with a lot of significant issues that made their voices known. And that could have driven an initial response. And now we're dealing with having other people who have other insights into the issue and other concerns, also swaying the, the, the position in the committee to reconsider. I think if you have a forum, you have the ability for people to express that. So you can get a consensus as to where the, where the public stands on the issue. And I think it's critical that the board have the ability to oversee this so that it doesn't get announced in a manner that comes across as final, even though it is, it was obviously still up for discussion. And I would strongly recommend choice, as reiterating my point before. Choice is critical for students and parents to have the ability to, to manage the individual expectations that they want to place on their son, their, their daughter and their aspirations and motivate their kids. And also having the ability to include quarter three GPA. But also if you're going to go to grading and Q four is an option, to allow those grades to impact your GPA and let colleges and let others determine how they want to, how they want to manage those GPAs when they go through the college application process. Thank you very much for the ability to talk.
Thank you. Rachel?
Yes. Hi. I know Mr. Mylone just kind of touched on this a little bit about student representation in the grading committee that Mr. Leslie and Dr. Law were talking about. And I think it would just be important for me as a student to also say that I agree that I think student opinions should be involved in this decision-making process since it is, in the end, us being either benefited or hurt from the decision. And I think perhaps maybe consulting with student governments, such as the class presidents and that whole committee from each grade would also be super important. It wasn't made clear, I know Mr. Leslie had mentioned that student opinions and voices were heard during the original decision-making process, but it wasn't made clear how that was done or who was consulted. And I just wanted to, from a student, say that I think it would be very important to hear our opinions and have us involved in the process. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Vin?
Yeah. Vin Colonna from Hebron. I just wanted to state, this is obviously unprecedented times. And I think, as I, as I said last week, I think there needs to be a public forum where people can, both students and parents can discuss this and have their questions answered. I don't think with the way that the communication went out Friday, you know, I think it was insinuated that people can reach out to the, the school principal. But it wasn't put out that way in the email. So I don't think people know that they have, maybe have a chance to voice their opinion. I think the few that, that are active and reached out are the ones that you're seeing on this call tonight. But the vast majority of people have not had the chance to hear why, the reasons why this grading system was put in place, how it was put in place. And I think that, that should be sent out to the entire school as this is such an important development and, and what's going on in this, in this crisis. I know everybody's busy, but actually we're a lot less busy than, than we used to be. So hopefully, hopefully that can be sent out and, and the student body and the parents could be, have the opportunity to participate in that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone on the phone that would like to make a comment? All right. I'm seeing no more chat comments and no one's speaking up. So that's the end of public comments. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I second that. I second that.
All right. So Vinny and Judy and I'll just, Jessica, your vote?
Yeah, aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Judy?
Yeah.
Rob?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Vinny?
Yes.
And myself, it's a yes. So motion is adjourned. And that time, I thank you all for joining and have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Take care.